Good evening, this time I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chavis.
Yes.
All opposed likewise? Motion carried.
Well, I'm sorry, it needs to be a roll call vote, sorry.
I was just, closing the meeting, I was just gonna do it without the roll call, and he called a roll now before we start our regular meeting. But anyway.
Yeah.
Ms. Chavis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Air and yes.
Yes, Mr. Bissett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver? Mr. Silver? Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullitt?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullitt?
Yes.
Everybody's own but Mr. Silver.
Okay, great, thank you.
This time I'd like to call to order the National Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. And I'll return the meeting to Dr. Ellis. Good evening. At this time we will At this time we will solicit names for Chair of the School Board. I will take nominations at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Franklin Lamb for Chair.
Sure.
Any more?
The nomination be closed.
Motion to close nominations? Mr. Malone will vote.
Correct, you'll vote to close the nominations and then you'll vote on the nomination.
Alright, so we were gonna vote to close the nominations? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Bullitt, E. Bullitt?
No.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, to close.
Mr. Silver? Not on. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, to close.
Mr. Bissett?
Yes, to close nominations.
Ms. S. Bullitt?
Yes.
Ms. Chavis?
Yes, to close.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, Dr. Ellis.
Alright, motion to close nominations, now we will vote. Mr. Malone, do you want me to just tell everyone to re-
No, no, yes, now you do another roll call vote, this time for Franklin Lamb to be the Chair.
Alright, roll call, Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Bullitt? E. Bullitt?
No.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards? Yes, for Franklin. Mr. Silver's answer, Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, for Mr. Lamb.
Mr. Bissett? Yes. Ms. S. Bullitt?
Yes.
Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
I voted in support of the nomination.
Mr. Lamb, vote? Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, he gets the vote.
Vote carried nine to one. In favor of Board Chair, Mr. Lamb. Congratulations, Mr. Lamb. Thank you. Keen to try to do my best, will you, everybody help me? This time, I would accept nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair-
Chairman, this is Lang.
Okay.
I nominate Bill Sharp for position of Board Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a nomination, this is Donovan. I nominate Rashonda Washington.
Any more nominations? I will entertain a motion to close nominations. Motion by Mr. Bissett? Second by Mr. Edwards. All in favor of Ms. Chavis?
No, 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 you've gotta carry the vote to close the nominations first.
That's what he's doing.
I thought he said, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I misunderstood what you said, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes, to close.
Yes. Mr. Bissett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
I vote yes, to close the nomination.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver, not here, Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullitt?
You're on mute, Evelyn.
Mr. Silver is on my phone, he cannot get back into the meeting, so he's on the call, but he's listening to you from my phone.
Okay, do you wish to vote yes or no to close the nomination?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Mr. Silver, yes.
Okay, Ms. S. Bullitt?
Yes.
Nominations are closed. This time we'll take votes for Mr. Sharp. Or Ms. Washington, we'll go through the roll one time, just tell me who you wish to vote for.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be easiest under the weird rules that we have.
Yeah. Ms. Chavis?
Ms. Washington.
Mr. Edwards? Mr. Bill Sharp. Mr. Sharp, Mr. Bissett?
Bill Sharp.
Mr. Sharp?
Bill Sharp.
Mr. Dunn?
Bill Sharp.
Mr. Jenkins?
Bill Sharp.
Mr. Silver?
Rashonda Washington. Washington.
Ms. Washington?
Washington.
E. Bullitt?
Washington.
S. Bullitt?
Washington.
I've got six to five.
Mr. Sharp hasn't won the nomination by the count of six to five.
You didn't ask for Ms. Chavis's vote, did you?
Uh huh, I was the first one.
Oh, she was the first one, okay.
Congratulations, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, sir.
This time we have the flag of allegiance. Our flag of allegiance.
To the flag of United
States of America. To the Republic.
What you say? One nation, under God.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda this time.
So moved.
Eight seven.
Hey, do we need to amend it at this point?
Yeah.
I'm also gonna make a motion that we amend the agenda and add ten point seven, so that we can talk about the uniform changes, uniform policy changes in this meeting.
I have a second. First by Mr. Edwards, second by Mr. Bissett, to add a ten point seven, the uniform policy. Now, for adoption of the agenda now. Mr. Edwards makes a motion to adopt the agenda.
I made the motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Alright, Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bissett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Silver?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
E. Bullitt?
Yes.
S.?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously to adopt the agenda. Approval of Board Minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve Board Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bissett? Thinking by Mr. Sharp, Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bissett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullitt?
Yes.
S. Bullitt?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Now with number six, the Board of Education Committee of Selection, Dr. Ellis.
So the Board, we discussed this, and I just wanna make sure of the new committee arrangement, just wanted to read it, that each Board member is gonna be assigned two committees. If you can decide that amongst yourselves, probably in the next few weeks, we'll get that aligned. We are now gonna have three departments represented, it'll be Administrative Services, Student Support Services, and Academic Services, so we'd like for you to get on to these committees, and we'll complete this, and moving forward, February meeting, we'll have these committees starting.
When do you say, question? When you said to start, when you said to start on that was, Dr. Ellis?
I think we would like to start in February Board Meeting.
So you wanna have names by the February Board Meeting?
At least in about two weeks, that would help, so we can start pushing this in, fill this out. And to get you the information in your committee. I'll send this, I'll resend this on Friday, so you'll see. Because some of you are already on some of these committees, it's just, you want to stay on, we're just pushing it to the department.
Right, this does not need to be voted on, does it?
No, not at this time, I think that once, and the Chair actually can ultimately just place people on these committees, so once you get the feedback, you can place names on the committee, and then, in working with the superintendent, you can decide how to schedule it going forward.
Okay. Recognitions, Dr. Calano.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Lamb, Vice Chair Sharp, and members of the Board. I am here with one recognition, one group of recognitions this evening, and we have got, I believe, some members of the United Way on the Zoom with us. I see an iPhone, maybe that is either Rick McMahon or Jenny Morbutter? Or not. So we have finished up our United Way campaign, and we had a total giving of forty-nine thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight dollars, which is pretty impressive for the time that we're in, and we had to delay the campaign a little bit because of reopening schools and things like that, so I'm very proud of all of the United Way coordinators that we have in our schools, each school has one representative, or two, that kind of headed up the campaign, and we feel really proud of the effort that they've all put in. Jenny, I see you joining us now, I'm gonna turn things over to you and let you do the recognitions.
Wonderful, good evening, everyone. I apologize, I was muted there for a second, but I just wanna say hello to everyone, and thank you so much for letting us be with you this evening. On behalf of our Board of Directors and the thousands of individuals we serve in Nash and Edgewcombe Counties, we wanna thank the Nash County Public Schools for what we would call a unique twenty-twenty United Way campaign, but your loyalty is very much appreciated. Nash County Public School System and your employees have a profound impact on our community. Because of your support, we are able to provide all kinds of services for thousands of our citizens every year. And as we were just mentioning, we were, this has been a challenging year, I know you all have experienced that already, and the fact that you made this a priority for United Way and for our community, we are very, very grateful. We're excited that the campaign raised forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, which is amazing. That puts Nash County Public Schools within the top five contributors for our local United Way campaign, so thank you so much for that. As you know, in the past years, we have asked award winners to come to the School Board Meeting with our unique situation, we know that the best bet for us is to verbally recognize everybody this evening, and then we look forward to working with Dr. Catalano on a strategy to make sure we recognize all the award-winning schools, either onsite or a way that's gonna work best for everybody. So, for this evening, if we can, we would like to just make the announcement on our top campaigns and some other awards, and then we will, again, work with Dr. Catalano to work out a strategy to make sure we go and visit each school directly. So our first award category is highest total contributions. For our elementary category, we're excited to announce that Bailey Elementary raised three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars for the United Way and for our community. That is an amazing contribution, and I wish we could have a big applause, but certainly, yay, we're excited for that. And for our middle school category, we had Rocky Mount Middle School, two thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. For our high school category, Northern Nash High School raised an awesome four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. That is an amazing amount, so we're grateful for that. And within our departments, curriculum and instruction raised one thousand and forty-four dollars. So again, highest contributions, just a great amount, we're so grateful for all that support. And our second award category goes to schools and departments that have exceeded their previous contributions by more than three percent. And in a year like this, we think that's just an amazing thing, to be able to exceed what they've done in the past by three percent. And I appreciate that these award categories were a unique way that Dr. Catalano and Sarita Lamb, we appreciate you all coming up with this approach, I think it worked really well. So the Human Resources Department increased by a whopping a hundred and seventy-nine percent, which is amazing. Swift Creek Elementary increased by ninety-seven percent. Benvenue Elementary increased by twenty percent. Tar River Academy increased by fourteen percent. Bailey Elementary increased by twelve percent. Nash Central High School increased by six percent. Cooper's Elementary increased by four percent. And Rocky Mount High increased by three percent, so just a really awesome effort in a really challenging year. When I know your priorities are about, obviously, curriculum and instruction, and making sure your students are taken care of, again, we appreciate United Way being a priority. So as we close this out, I know Mr. McMahon was trying to get on, he was having trouble, but I wanna express on his behalf, and Robert Covington, our other co-chair for the United Way campaign, and just everybody that we serve, we wanna thank you, Dr. Ellis, for being a leader and supporting United Way, and being a forefront of saying how important it is. Dr. Catalano and Sarita Lamb, thank you for your leadership and helping with all the coordination. We obviously wanna thank our School Board leaders, thank you for what you do every day. We are in this together, and we're here, and we wanna continue making the difference together as a team. And obviously, to all of our schools, departments, our principals, our teachers, our leaders that work at every school, and for everybody who donates to United Way, we're just so grateful, and we just wanna say thank you so much. And we conclude, thank you so much for all your support.
Thank you. We will, we have invited all of the coordinators to join YouTube this evening to watch the recognitions, we will be going out. Yeah, so that, hopefully, they saw live who won, in terms of their, achieved their goals. We have got a small gift for all of the coordinators that we'll be personally delivering to the schools, hopefully, over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be bringing out the certificates with the awards as well, so thank you all so very much for your effort in contributing to United Way and launching a really great campaign. And that concludes our recognition for the evening.
Again, the public input, each month, a part of at least one regular scheduled Board Meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the Board through public comment. A sign-up sheet will be available in the Communications Office for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the Board. The deadline is noon the day of the Board meeting. Any individual or group can sign up by appearing in person or by calling the Communications Office. The chairperson will decide the amount of time devoted to public comment. The superintendent shall develop additional procedures to ensure that public comment sessions proceed in efficient and orderly manner. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the Board except to request clarifications of points made. Except in cases of emergency, information received during presentation will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take unanimous vote of the Board members present to take action on a presentation considered to be of an unusual or emergency nature at the time it is presented. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen point seventeen. If the Board does not hold a regular meeting during a month, the Board will not provide a time for public comment at any other meeting held during that month, unless a majority of the Board votes to allow public comment at the meeting, or unless the purpose of the meeting is a public key. And I do not think we have anybody signed up for public input this morning. Okay? Approval of consent agenda. Mr. Sharp?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We have one item on the consent agenda, and that's capital improvement plan by Mr. Shannon Davis.
Okay, the superintendent recommends the Board approve the capital improvement plan as presented.
Alright, this time I entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Bissett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Edwards? To approve the capital improvement plan, Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bissett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullitt?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullitt?
Yes.
A unanimous vote, the capital improvement plan is approved. Then the silence, personnel recommendations, action, Ms. Wallace?
Good evening again, Chairman Lamb, Vice Chair Sharp, President and Zoomed-in Board Members. The personnel report has been presented and reviewed. On behalf of Superintendent Ellis, your approval of the personnel report is requested.
I will entertain a motion to approve personnel recommendations.
So moved, second.
Mr. Sharp made the motion, who's second?
Mr. Silver.
Okay, Mr. Silver's second. Ms. Chavis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bissett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullitt?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullitt?
Yes.
Motion was passed unanimously? Donations, Dr. Catalano.
Good evening, Chair Lamb, Chair Sharp, Dr. Ellis, and members of the Board. We have two donations for you this evening, one from Rocky Mount Middle School, who received a donation from Wake Electric Collaborative, who gave a grant in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars to the band program, to be used for purchasing proper equipment for virtual learning and assistance in recording their performances. Southern Nash Middle School received the following donation from STEP, who gave a grant in the amount of three thousand dollars to the Steaming Into Art Program, to be used for offering art students the opportunity to create, explore, and collaborate with building and programming robots. The superintendent recommends accepting these two donations.
I move that we accept the donations as presented.
Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Washington?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
All in favor? Ms. Chavis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bissett?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
E. Bullitt?
Yes.
S. Bullitt?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously? Reopening Plan Update, Dr. Ellis.
So at this time, just wanted to give a brief reopening plan update for the district. Before Christmas, we met and delayed the opening, that I believe was January eleventh, based on the metrics and the operational concerns we had as a district. It was suggested that we provide basically two options concerning the reopening, we will discuss these options tonight. So, okay, so the recommendation one would be just, January twenty-fifth, we would start Plan B, which means we would all be in blended learning. That would push in the secondary schools, elementary is already in Plan B, we'll move now secondary. Moving forward, we did, we right now have a hundred and ninety-seven quarantined. So we have told the principals that if some teachers felt like they needed to stay remote at this time, we will, until that January twenty-fifth date. We're giving them the option, because based on some of the conversations we'd have with the school nurses, we think that this would be a good time to keep them out if they feel like they needed to be out. Some are still in school with some arms, just wanna let you know that. So the timeline for reopening, like I said, would be January twenty-fifth. The recommendation number two, what I'm just gonna present to the Board is, if there is a spike in the next two weeks, we could easily call a January nineteenth special call meeting to discuss the options, if we start moving metrics in a higher direction, we could easily just meet again like we did in December to see what we would do. But like, what I wanted to do tonight- But like what I wanted to do tonight was kind of show you where we are right now in some of the new metrics and dashboard that we're going to start using so you were able to see how we track some of this because we talked about last time, not as much positivity rate is can we actually operate school. So we've got something tonight we want to show you. Mr. Farah, I'm going to let you start with that first slide and the second.
As you can see, starting back on December. Starting back on December 18th, and at this point, Nash County is currently critically red, or critical, I mean red. Edgecombe County is substantial, and then orange. And just to speak a little bit about that, most of our counties throughout the state of North Carolina are currently critical and in red. I think it's just shy, a little bit over 90%. You can go to the next slide, Mr. McQueen. Thank you. So our positivity rate, if you look here at the chart, you can see it goes back to the week of 11/29 and up to the week of January 4th. And for Nash County, you can see that we've had a steady increase from 8.7% to 11.8% at this time. Edgecombe County, starting back on 11/29, the week of 11/29, started at 9.4% and actually went up in December to 11% and then began to decline. And then from December 18th through our current state, it went up from 9.1% to 9.7%. The number of new cases, you can see here, I want to highlight that this week alone, our week back, we've had 19 new positive cases for COVID-19. And we're looking at the number of individuals quarantined. You can see that back on 11/29, we had 175. December 7th, we jumped up to 189. We then began to have a decrease over the next two months and now, excuse me, over the next couple of weeks, and now we're back up to 197 who are quarantined. Ms. Wallace, you want to talk about the leaves and accommodations?
So when we look at the number of leaves at this point, we currently have zero. In December, we did have two. When we look at teleworking and accommodations, that's when people are allowed to use one of the COVID pathways, and those pathways are designed for those that have medical illnesses here and for those who may be critical or they're high risk for the actual COVID. And that has fluctuated, beginning in November, we have gone up and down, we had a steady incline in December, and as of January 4th, 20th, we do currently have 82 that are using those accommodations.
So, I think we did the, we did a very good thing when I think we did delay because I believe we would have some issues if we did start in 11. But I do, when you look and you track some of this data, I do think by the 25th, we should be able to be in a Plan B. When it comes to operating, we're starting to think about, and I show you the next dashboard, we're going to start thinking about, so how many cafeteria workers are in the school that we can actually run cafeterias? We talked about bus routes, if the bus driver's out, so what do we do? Can we run the buses for the school? Custodial, then we talk about the teaching staff, which we've talked about, and then supervisory staff, we've had a few principals that had to quarantine. So the next slide you'll see is something that we've come up with that I think will help us kind of look at each individual school on a weekly basis and find out, can we operate that school? If there are some quarantines and some COVIDs that happen. And the example is like right now, staffing in Nash County schools is 91.8. That'll tell you how many are at home, accommodations, and it kind of gives us a snapshot of our county. Now if you click on, can you give me that link there? What we're going to start doing, and more to talk about this, is we're going to start tracking every school to come up with some percentages of how many are out, can we operate it, you know, with 90% staff, 80% staff? And we've come up, and I don't know if we've perfected the red and the green and the yellows, but we're going to start highlighting, and if you see there, like Johnson, right now has currently about, is that, I can't, I wish I could read, 16 that are either quarantined or were quarantined. So put them at about a 60% ratio, which is, in our opinion, a very, that's a hotspot. So instead of us making decisions to close the district, we would start having more conversations about going to that school, and if we couldn't manage it, we would just put that school on a two-week quarantine remote learning plan C. Because you can see at other schools right now, they're at 90%, some are at 100%, which means they're doing fine. And this is going to be a metric I'll send weekly so you can kind of see where we're at and kind of know where we're coming from. We've talked about in cabinet that if it is a red school, we would go and talk with the principal. We'd start discussing, what do you think? Can you operate it? Do we need to do something different? We've had instances here where we've actually pushed some people from central office to go to the school. We're going to do whatever we can to keep, if we can operate it, we're going to operate. But if it comes to a point that it's, we can't, we're just going to individually shut a school down for Plan C instead of the district that makes sense. So that's going to be something that we'll start sending now, so you'll kind of understand where we're coming from. And I think this is a very good indicator that'll kind of track in these weeks after the holidays of where we're at. Okay? So that should be us last night. So I don't know if we're really voting on two options tonight. Option one basically would be, we're just going to go in Plan B, moving forward, starting the 25th. The second option to me would be, if we look at these metrics in two weeks and we see some of the metrics and a lot of the red on that dashboard we just showed you, we would have a special call meeting, start discussing, what would we want to do? If it's only two or three schools, I still want you to be involved in how our decision is if we have to do a Plan C with that individual school. But I want you to be able to see the whole district as a, you know, as each school to make sure, go moving forward. So I don't know if that's two options, but if there is an issue, we could actually come back the 18th, if we feel like it's too much and make a decision. Okay? Any questions?
Was that date the 18th or the 19th?
Excuse me, it would be the 19th.
Okay.
Dr. Ellis.
Yes, sir.
How often or what's the frequency do this county report your numbers into Dr. Catalano?
I think, Mr. Farah, when we do that, probably daily. Dr. Catalano, whatever comes to us, you can explain.
Yeah, so the nurses update their spreadsheet almost daily, but we pull the numbers on every Friday. So we're compiling them into that spreadsheet that Dr. Ellis was just sharing on Fridays. And you have access to that spreadsheet. It's the same spreadsheet we've been using from the beginning.
Yeah, we just added another file in there, so you'll be able to tab just to pull it up, and you'll be able to see, as soon as we update it, you see it.
So you will be reviewing that data on the 18th or the 19th and making a decision whether or not we need to convene to determine whether we push it out or we're still on schedule?
I'm thinking that next Friday, we will probably be able to look at some of these metrics, and I can send something to you. And if we feel like we're fine, we probably wouldn't need to have a meeting, we'll just say, look, we got about two schools with hotspots, we will deal with them individually, and I'll tell you what we're going to do moving forward with that school. Because as you can tell, it's just certain ones, and we're waiting for that, you know, the holiday bump that we were expecting. So I think right now, we are getting that bump, but the good thing is, we're not in school. So we're able to let those teachers get that two-week really of quarantine, they're out of the buildings. So that'll give us that bump to let it come down, because if you look at the past data, you'll see about two or three weeks is what we needed for Thanksgiving. So if we can get that, I'm assuming next Friday, we'll get some different metrics, and then I'll let you know if we do need to meet. But if it's just a couple of schools, I think I'll just have a conversation and say, look, we have these two schools that we need to address, and we'll go from there.
So what benchmark would you use to determine whether you notify the board?
Well, I'm thinking if it's over four or five schools, you're going to need to know. Our issue probably moving into the holidays was, we were getting to the point, and these were elementary schools since they had students, we were getting to the point, we were losing 20 to 15 in a building, and we were starting to put Band-Aids on this. And thankfully, when the holidays came, we were able to, you know, I guess move out, which helped. But I think now, we've had this month of holidays, we'll be able to see what happens, but then moving forward, I think this will be a good way to track some of this information for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chavis, you got? She muted.
You muted, Dr. Ellis.
Mr. Chair, how available would this information be for parents? I've had a few calls as we were talking tonight, I've had two parents to text me and say, it helps them if they know early, so if they have to make changes in their schedules. And I responded, I, we don't know until we know the numbers, but are they going to be made aware of some of this information as well?
Yes, so we have a communication plan in place for the schools in the event that they need to close. If it's an individual building, the principal, as soon as the decision is made, would let the principal, would let the school community know. They're also actually notifying of positive cases in the building, and we have that dashboard on the district site that is, in addition to the full data that we just shared with you, there's some public facing data that's also published on Fridays where they can see the number of positive cases in the building so they can get an idea of the trends and where things are going. So there is a plan to have that communicated as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Rob, do we need to vote on this as the board?
No, I don't think you need to vote unless there's some change. No, you don't need to vote.
So just be, this week, you'll get the first dashboard Friday, and then from there on, you'll be able to access it, you'll see it anyway, you have it, I believe it's already on that spreadsheet. But I'll emphasize that you can go to it on Friday, and you'll be able to track this school like we do. Okay?
Again, I'd like to thank the central office for keeping our public up to date on what is going on as best we can. Thandra Smith.
I would just like to say thank you for that information. I think the more information that we as a board have, the better our decision will be. So I would just like to commend the superintendent and his staff for all that valuable information.
Thank you, they have done a very good job with this.
There we go, number five, the Thandra Smith contract, Dr. Ellis.
So I believe at this time, we'll be presenting the Thirteenth contract to be voted on.
And I'm happy to speak to that for a second if you want.
We're going to let you vote.
Well, no, I just was going to say that, you know, we were fortunate enough to get hired by the board in 2013, and we established our rates in 2013, and I think the, we have not had a rate increase since the 2014-15 school year. So this was, you know, it's a $5 increase, but it's an attempt to try to help offset some of our expenses that continue to rise. So that's what we're hoping to do.
Any questions about the contract? I entertain a motion to approve the contract.
So moved. We approve the contract for Thirteenth and Smith.
Motion by Mr. Viset, second by Ms. Washington. Ms. Chavis, how do you vote?
Ah, yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Viset.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Silver.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
E. Bullard.
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullard.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Facility naming.
Can I just say thank you real quick for a second? I just want to thank the board for your support. It's been a lot of fun working with you, and I appreciate the support.
Thank you, Rob, for what you do for us. Facility naming, Mr. Davis.
Superintendent and ad hoc construction committee request approval to conduct community surveys to select the name, mascots, and colors for the new elementary school.
Any questions to Mr. Davis?
Yeah, quick question.
Ms. Sharp.
How long do you think before you come up with a name and a mascot? Do you put a timeline on that?
The survey is going out, I think it's, it takes a week or so. I think that's where they've got it out, Dr. Catalano, and then we're going to go over what the community inputs, and then the ad hoc committee's meeting again, and then we'll bring that to the board in February.
And make a decision on a name and a mascot?
Yes, sir, at the February board meeting, the full board will vote on that.
Okay, thank you.
Will we get all the suggestions and of names that the community sends in? Will we get a chance to look at all those names?
Either way, so as the chair of that committee, Ms. Bullard, yes, you will. Dr. Catalano has put together a nice survey, it will come in, and I'm assuming in spreadsheet format, so we will see the totals, and she'll have some different information about what their suggestions may be in the totals of that. It'll come to the committee, and then we'll share that with you guys, and then the committee will make a recommendation to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion to approve the facility name. Survey. Survey. With motion by Mr. Edwards, second by Ms. Viset.
The facility name?
Survey.
Okay, survey, okay, thank you.
Ms. Chavis.
Yes.
Ms. Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Viset.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yeah.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Silver.
Yes.
Ms. L. Washington.
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullard.
Yes.
Yes, Bullard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Now at 10:07. Uniform policy.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, entertain a motion that we have a waiver for the uniform policy for the rest of this semester that's in the dress code policy. for the uniform policy for the rest of this semester that's in the dress code policy. Okay, Mr. Visser has made a motion to waive the uniform policy to send the dress code rest of this semester, then second by Ms. Jenkins. Any question? Okay, we'll vote on this, Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Visser?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yeah.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullard?
Yes.
Ms. Bullard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, now with superintendent's report. So I just want to welcome everyone back from the break. Second semester has begun. I'm receiving emails from parents about just kids being back in school, and I just want to let parents know that that is our goal from the start, because we know the problems that are going on, we think that the best thing to do is have kids in those buildings. And I appreciate the support from the board and staff, schools and this central office because I believe by going into Plan D, starting the 25th, we're going to reach that goal, and we're going to allow kids to have that choice to be in that building, if not, they can go virtual. It has been a heavy lift, but I appreciate all the support. Because I think we're reaching that goal of being able to start and get those kids in the building by the 25th. But thank you. Question. During the restart, is that, I know we've had a discussion about the raises for bus drivers, is that when that may take effect? When we go into Plan B, I believe that'll be when we can start some of those raises. So the work's done, we just got to get into Plan B. We got to get them out of the buses, right? That's right, got to get them in the buses. I just want to make sure we covered that for bus drivers, I think, listen. Any other questions? My report, again, I'd like to thank the teachers for what they're doing. I've said it many times, I could not be a teacher man. I see how hard it is, like I said before, having a Zoom meeting with 11 board members, I couldn't imagine with 25 different backgrounds and all, trying to have a class every day. Thank you for what you're doing. We've got a long ways to go, but we're going to continue to work hard and make it come to a fruitful ending. Thank you. Schedule of upcoming meetings and important dates. February work session will be Monday, February 1st at 5:00. February board meeting will be February 1st at 7:00. This time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Visser to adjourn, second by Mr. Edwards. Ms. Chavis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Visser?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp? Mr. Sharp, how do you vote on the adjournment?
Yes, 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 yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
E. Bullard?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullard?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, everybody stay healthy. Thank you.